Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting on September seventeenth, twenty nineteen at six thirty-four P.M. and ask for roll call.
Mr. Crosby?
Here.
Ms. Spidey?
Here.
Mr. Barin?
Here.
Mr. Martieri?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Moore?
Here.
And I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Bouda.
One of the highlights we always have is the summer travel in twenty nineteen. And so tonight, we get to hear about summer travel to Costa Rica, tropical ecology, field course, Spain, Ireland, and the global leadership summit. Coming forward to make the presentation introduction, it's Susan Johnson. Do it just next to her.
Hi there.
Hello.
All right. All right, so each year, we have a number of trips that get to go on trips or get to go overseas or go on summer trips. This year, we had one summer field course, which means that there's also a summer school component to that. That's our Costa Rica tropical ecology trip. And then we also had three excursion trips. So first, we're going to have some students talk about the Costa Rica tropical ecology course. That's Cheyenne Macklin and Trinity Anderson.
Bless you.
Okay, hi, I'm Trinity Anderson.
I'm Cheyenne Macklin.
Okay, so this is a picture of us in San Jose. This is our last stop on the trip, and these are our lead chaperones, Ms. Stowe, Ms. Vincent, and...
Ms. Powell.
Yes. So Coral La Zita was our first stop. It was at sea level. It was, I would say, definitely not the most hot, but maybe like most humid. We did a lot of like fun beach days. This was my first hike and first time seeing monkeys like in real life.
In Monte Verde, we got to, we spent a lot of time there. We spent like three days there. We got to do a service project, which included us like painting at the local park. We did a lot of hikes in there because, you know, Costa Rica is known for the biodiversity there. We also got to take a dance class, which was...
A university.
At the university, at Georgia?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the University of Georgia, they have a...
A bar.
Yes, yeah. And we got to do classes and stuff like that.
This is Sarah Pique. Here at the bottom, you see Cheyenne like doing the service project in one of their local schools. On the right, you also have us at a chocolate plantation.
Yeah, and on the left, that little mushroom right there, that's something that you can only see once a year, so we were really lucky to see it that day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a Spanish trip. This is actually a combination of our Spanish teacher, Mr. Manuel Gonzalez, and our art teacher, Mr. Mark Collins. And they kind of did an art history, Spanish collision. So we have Mikhail Thompson and Molly Anderson.
Hi, I'm Mikhail.
I'm Molly. And that top-left picture is when we got to visit the ambassador to Spain from the U.S. And we got to like ask him questions, and he gave a little talk about Frankfurt, right? Which is really cool and a really awesome experience.
Yeah, that was really interesting because not only did we get to talk to him about like being an ambassador and like tour the house, there was tons of art all around. So Mr. Collins was like whispering to us, "This is fun." And like trying to like give us an art history lesson all over.
It was really interesting.
Yeah.
We also got to meet two interns from the U.S. who were like working there over the summit. So they like kind of like talked to us about like their experience and like how like we could be like exactly like...
Cool.
Yeah. And then we also had like a lot of like other experiences. So we actually went shopping for ingredients for paella in this like little like market. And so that was like a really like awesome experience.
Yeah, we also went on a scavenger hunt. And both of those things, like it was exclusively speaking in Spanish. And we were all just like hung up like, like trying to figure out how to not like completely stumble through. But we, I feel like my group did, we were competing. I thought my group did pretty good, so.
My group placed third for the scavenger hunt, so we did, we did all right. We didn't take an hour, so.
Yeah, and here, we're at the La Alhambra. And there, that's in, where is that?
That was, um...
Yes.
Yeah, we learned a lot about like history and everything. It was mostly, it was probably the most immersive like part of the trip. Like, we were there for a week, and then we spent a few days in Sevilla and a few days in Madrid. And yeah, that part was just crazy because we were there for so long. And it felt like we were getting to know like where we were going and like...
Yeah, we like knew our way around the town. And Senor Gonzalez grew up there, so he had like a lot of friends and family who were like, who like helped out on the scavenger hunt and then also were like teaching us things. And yeah, we learned a lot there. And then on the left is a picture of us in Madrid. And, yeah, that's the, I don't know, that's the plaza. So yeah, we spent, I think, three days there. And then in Sevilla, we spent three or four because we had a lot of travel in between then. But yeah.
Yeah, and we paint, we got to paint La Alhambra for like across, like there's a church that's on a hill that's across town that has a beautiful view of like the entire, you can see, it's so big and you can see pretty much all of it.
Yeah.
And we got to paint it one morning, and that was super cool.
My parents framed the picture I painted as soon as I got to the address.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ireland.
Okay, so this is Westport, I believe, right?
Yeah.
For sure.
That was the Diamond House.
Yeah, so the picture on the upper right-hand corner is when we hiked, oh my God, I totally...
That was the Diamond, right?
That was the Diamond, for sure.
Yeah.
That was pretty intense.
Yeah, that was definitely the hardest hike I think I have ever done, but was definitely the most gratifying one as well. This was, at the very, very bottom of this, there was a bog. I've never seen a bog before. I vividly recall our tour guide, who was this very interesting sort of macho man who had a walking stick and while we were walking, paused to show us what the bog was like. And the bog was apparently something that was used for agriculture. And he took his walking stick and to show us how deep it was, just stuck it in the ground and it fell all the way to the top. It was, you know, four feet deep. Pulled it out, and it was everywhere. And then bottom right, that was in Dublin, right? Yeah.
Stephen Green?
Stephen Green, thank you. Yeah, Stephen Green was really, 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 really beautiful. Dublin, we learned a whole ton about James Joyce, and about James Joyce and literature.
Definitely, I've definitely learned a lot more about books that I haven't read compared to the books that I have read. We had lectures, you know, every day, like five days, at the James Joyce Center. And that's basically like a bunch of scholars, like we were the only high schoolers there. And we were like working among people with doctorates or working on their doctorates and like devoted their entire lives, like fifty-two, so like fifty years, like dedicated to like Joycean literature. And we're just like, hey, I just read Dubliners, like what's up? I don't know Ulysses yet, but whatever.
Yeah, and Dubliners, which was the book that I read, we each got to choose which book we wanted to read by James Joyce, was taught by an Austrian teacher named Dr. Peter Van de Kamp, who was this extravagant, fascinating teacher who taught us all about Dubliners. But one of my favorite memories of his, this was sort of when I realized that like my trip to Ireland would really sort of revolutionize how we lived in English, was when I walked inside and, you know, we all sat down, we went through our names and stuff, and he asked us, "Okay, so what did you think of Dubliners?" Because of course, we'd already read it before. And, you know, it got to me, and I said, you know, standards spiel. "Oh, I thought it was amazing. I thought it was masterful writing." Truth is, I understood almost none of it. And he proceeded to cut me off and explain, "No, James Joyce's Dubliners is a bad book. It is poorly written," and proceeded to take the final story of the book, which is viewed commonly as a masterpiece, and ripped it apart, telling me exactly rhetorically why it was a horrible piece of writing. And then explained to us that that was exactly what James Joyce was doing, that he was trapping us, that he was showing us exactly what we were supposed to see, making us believe that it was good writing. It was really fascinating.
Yeah, same thing for me. My scholar that I was assigned to, I did a portrait of the artist as a young man. And so I read the book, you know, like taking it completely seriously. This is classic teen angst, except for early like twentieth-century Dublin, but still relatable. And so when I walked in on the first day, we went in a circle, and I was like half with my peers, half with people working on their doctorates. And the students, like the whole pair of students went first, and we were like, "Oh, yeah, very classic tale." And then when I got to this, like the people working on the doctorates, it was so ironic. I thought it was hilarious. I was like, what, did I just spend like a month reading but taking it seriously just to find out that it's all a joke?
And the second week was spent traveling around Ireland through the countryside, going on hikes and stuff. And that was an immensely powerful experience, sort of getting to know a different culture. It was a type of tangible history that I hadn't really been used to. I mean, in Illinois, you know, the oldest stuff we find are barns that date back to the eighteen-fifties there. You know, as we traveled around Ireland, looking out the windows, going on six-hour trips from Dublin to Westport to North Antrim, I mean, we saw old decrepit stone buildings that looked like they dated back centuries and centuries and centuries and centuries. I mean, at some point, you know, it stops being man-made structures and starts sort of falling into the landscapes. Soon enough, the stone buildings just become part of the plateaus, the grass, and it was really a powerful experience, a type of sort of tangible history I'd never really seen before. It was a wonderful trip.
Thank you.
And last, and certainly not least, is our global leadership summits. We have Jack Mahler, we have Oliver Green, Kate Reed.
Kate Reed.
Do we get a slide?
Oh, sure. Might have to.
Well, I guess, so this is kind of starting at the end. So the trip was actually to three countries. It was to Helsinki, Finland, Thailand, Estonia, and then this is in Davos, Switzerland, where we had our final summit at the end. And basically, the whole theme of the summit is like the power of communication, basically. And so we did, we kind of like split into these groups, like randomly assigned to kids for all different tours. Because the way the organization works is they send kids on tours throughout all of Europe. So we were on like a Finland, Estonia trek, but there were other people that went to like Spain and Germany and like, you know, Greece and like Poland. And it's like a whole, everyone went to different places, basically. And so you get placed with these people who you've never met before, some of them from Europe. There was a girl from Austria in my group. And then you kind of like come up with an idea to solve like a problem for a user, basically. So you interview other people in the room, and then you take that problem and you turn it into like a sixty-second elevator pitch. And then everyone goes and presents their elevator pitch to the room, and the best pitch or the best idea goes up on stage. And eventually, that process gets narrowed down to the best one on stage. Obviously, we had the best one in the whole summit because that's Max Gonzalez up there, and he won the whole thing.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, again, as Oliver said, we had two people from OPRF that were in the vitalist group and one that won it all, Max Gonzalez. Yeah, he met Ann Curry. He was, I mean, he was really kind of above the beyond in the whole experience. Although, you know, everyone at the conference gained from the experience in a personal way and also learning how to work with your group.
Yeah, just personally for me, when I went to that conference, I was developing leadership skills but wasn't quite there yet. But working with people who I had never known and there, even with a guy in our group who didn't even speak that much English, communicating was a little bit of a problem. But we all had to band together and work past it. So just getting past that barrier and managing to get everyone to band together and work on something when previously, we didn't even know each other's names and still had issues with them by the end of the conference was just amazing to see. And it really helped me develop into a person and gave me the confidence I needed for senior year.
And so like the speeches at the conference were pretty amazing, too. Like obviously, you see Ann Curry up there. She's not as big of a deal for our generation, but still. I mean, like, a lot, a lot of the kids haven't heard about her before. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so the winner of the whole summit, it was Max or, you know, whoever it ends up being every year gets their project, like all the materials from it and like a little like writing section trying to put inside the Nobel Peace Prize Museum. Yeah, so there's a, there's an OPRF kid's project in the Nobel Peace Prize Museum right now. Yeah. Pretty cool. And there were other speakers besides Ann Curry, too. Like, I don't know if you guys know who David Hogg is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so he, he was there, too. That was, that was a pretty heavy hitter. And then there's someone named Spylin, it's Kai Kite, you know, a bunch of other people as well, who are all like, you know, crazy good speakers. It was like a TEDx event, just like crammed in with like leadership and a bunch of other cool stuff. Get the next slide.
One of, that is the only slide. One of the cool things about the story, one of the cool things about this trip is that the students aren't spending time with OPRF students while they're on the trip. They're spending the time with other groups. And they're kind of at this very adult-like conference.
Yeah.
Where they have sessions and workshops and things to go to. It's, it's really kind of a different type of trip.
Yeah, I don't know if you've heard before also, but Davos, Switzerland, specifically this conference hall is where the World Economic Forum is held. So that's like, you know, we're all on the same steps as like huge world leaders as well, which is pretty cool. Yeah. And then, I guess, a little bit about beforehand, we went to like Finland and then Estonia. And those were less focused on the power of communication as a whole and more just to kind of like get you in a mindset of like, you know, working with different people, talking to, you know, obviously locals there and stuff. Like, I remember Estonia, I had like an hour-long conversation with this record store owner about like traditional Estonian music, and it was like, super cool. He didn't really speak that great of English, but I sort of got the gist of what he was saying, and it was like, it was pretty interesting. You guys any experiences in like in Estonia?
Yeah, Finland was awesome because there was really kind of brutal winters up there. So everyone, as soon as summer, everyone must be outside, and it seemed like everyone was just having a great time in like the summer light.
Just Finland for me was also particularly great because when we got off the bus, there were two other groups with us. There was one very big group from New Jersey and then a smaller group from California. And just, the New Jersey group is a little bit to adjust to, and I learned how to adjust to them in Finland. Just imagine about one hundred freshmen all in the same bus, and this is their first trip abroad. So it was a little bit of a learning curve, but I did manage to just make it better for myself than I thought it would be. And some of those kids, I actually still talk to them from time to time. Surprisingly, it's very shocking, I continue to surprise myself that I even speak to them to this day. But it was just, I learned how to talk with them instead of just being frustrated all the time, which is a life skill. And also, just Finland was stunning, but the hardest thing about it was the sun did not set till eleven at night. And coming off the plane with jet lag and seeing that it's still light up is not particularly nice. But it was just a great introduction and really set the tone for the rest of the trip.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Williams for allowing us to give us this opportunity.
Oh, yeah, he was great. He was actually pretty hands-off, to be honest. There were a lot of times where we just kind of got to go explore Helsinki and Tallinn by ourselves, you know? Like, my friend and I literally just decided like go to the modern art museum in Helsinki because it's free for students, because we had like, you know, a couple hours to ourselves, you know? So it's just fun stuff like that as well on the side.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. And this is always the time where I do my plug for, I'm available.
Chaperones?
Chaperones. Yeah. Tom and I are both happy to be chaperones. And I always encourage the students, as you come to, you know, present to the board, and I'm sure you've talked with a lot of your friends, you all are ambassadors for this, for these travel programs, where there's so many students, freshmen on, who think that I can't do this or maybe it's not the right thing. And you all are the perfect ambassadors to tell them how that they, you know, how exciting it can be and how much you learn and grow. So I encourage all of you to, to think of yourselves in that way and keep spreading the knowledge and excitement. This is the best part of any board meeting, so thank you all for taking the time to be here.
Appreciate it.
And now we are at public comments. And I just ask that you limit your comments to items that are under the purview of the board, and two free minutes, please.
So we have Deana Herman.
Hi. That was really nice to hear them. I'm excited for my kids to come here. So tonight, the board's going to hear a presentation about the Long-Term Facilities Plan. And during that presentation, I ask that you all consider the urgent accessibility needs in the school that need to be addressed prior to implementation of the long-term plan. At this time, after months of discussion, there's no timeframe or monies allocated to address the fact that this school, which is the only public high school for two communities, is lacking in usable and accessible bathrooms, as well as usable and accessible entrances to other spaces in the school like the library. These barriers prevent students from utilizing programs like their peers and are violations under the Americans with Disabilities Act. With the district's ample excess reserves, it's hard to see how funds cannot be allocated to these modest projects. During your conversation this evening about the long-term facilities plans, please also discuss when you can address the current state of the building and problematic spaces which are not included in the long-term plan. And please set a deadline for completion of these pressing upgrades before the start of summer school in twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to make a comment? Okay. And now our next item is approval of our minutes. I would ask for a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right back over to Dr. Bouda.
Okay, our first presentation is the presentation of the EMOJA contract, contract with EMOJA Student Development Corporation. Coming forward to make this presentation is our own Director of Student Support, this is Linda Parker. And this item is in conjunction with Strategic Plan Goal Two, Priority Two, Transformation of Teaching and Learning, and District Policies Six Cola Fifty and Six Cola Sixty-Five. Also joining her is Mr. Mike Karioche, Chief Operators Officer, and Mr. Gray Fancie, Associate Superintendent.
I know.
Everybody, if you could come on up.
Our, our goal is, after the presentation, at the committee of the poll, that we would ask the board to approve the agreement with EMOJA during September twenty-sixth, Board of Education meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I do believe that you have some familiarity from last year with EMOJA, so I am just doing a reminder of that, and then I'll take you around to where we are with the contract for this year in terms of how the extension of services will work for this year. We are in complete understanding that we are trying to shift the culture within the school in order to making sure that we're focusing on cultivating community as a way of making sure we're enhancing our restorative practice work within the building to develop our, our supportive learning community. EMOJA is our partner in this. And so within their mission, they focus really on building relationships throughout the building. That's adult-to-adult, students with adults, and making sure that we are building on the social-emotional needs of our students, and then also reducing conflict amongst students. Core areas of support that they focus on, social-emotional learning. Again, just making sure we're developing that skill within our students and the adults in the building, working on our restorative justice, which I know is a huge push for our district as a whole, in changing mindsets that take us away from punitive practices and more so into restorative ones and building those skills within students. And then also for post-secondary readiness, for whatever path our students are choosing to take after they leave our institution, that they feel ready for that and have the skills and possess that to move forward. So last year, when EMOJA was with us, you will remember they did some work with the board in terms of some training that came here. They also did a cohort of twenty-five of our staff members that participated in the year-long PD series that consisted of four workshops that you see there at the sixth community of practice. From that group of twenty-five, we have fifteen who are returning as advanced circle keepers. And just so that you'll remember this as we get to the contract talk, my hope with these individuals who are continuing on is that they are going to build this work throughout the building with their peers and become people in what I hope to eventually have as a, a peace room, that they can help to bring restorative work within that to both adults and students within the building. So those people are continuing their work this year as a cohort. So as a foundation to this process, relationships are key. What's been seen through research is that a sense of belonging in the school or in classrooms is what improves academic performance amongst our students. And what we know for sure is that we cannot restore something that never existed. So we focus on that as a basis of the work with EMOJA, that we're building relationships so that there are trusted adults throughout the building that students can depend on, but then also that adults feel supported in their work with the students as well. In those tiers, we focus on social-emotional learning. We know that, or you probably know that our teachers work on this through our instructional coaches, but we're also trying to make sure that our children understand that there are skills to be learned in order to develop and manage their emotions, in order for them to set and achieve positive goals, in order for them to acquire empathy and establish and maintain relationships, but also to make responsible decisions. And so that is something that is developed through this work. The equity piece within SEL, we are also working to try to heal the impact of racism and systemic oppression that we know exists in our society. And it creates an inclusive learning environment where students of color can feel as though they belong and can thrive within our environment. So what exactly is restorative justice? And you know, we hear this term quite a bit. And what I want us to be able to separate also is restorative justice from our restorative practices, like what we do to actually bring this work alive within the building. It is a mindset that values relationships at the center of community life, which means we care more about the person, and we want to see that we can actually make a difference in the life of the person and the decisions they make, as opposed to wanting to punish acts. And so that is what we're looking to do and find a balance within the building, within our practices, and that's a huge push this year as we go forward. The equity piece in that, historically, our students of color, our low-income students, our LBGTQ students, diverse learners, are the ones who get caught in our established system of discipline. And what we're trying to do is to see that through a lens that allows us to make a decision and do something different. One of the pushes that I'm working with in terms of just our dean's speak is looking at consequences versus punishment and seeing the difference between the two and what is appropriate for each situation. This comes to us as a result of the State Bill one hundred as well, where we have to look more at the impact of an infraction on our entire community versus how we feel about an infraction. And so that's kind of has the basis in this work with the equity. So we are working this year to build on last year with more of our staff in terms of being proactive, but then also having development in our responsive practices. So we believe that if we can build a foundation that exists with the relationships, we can continue to build on that, will kind of bring down our numbers of, of infractions that happen, but then we'll also be ready to better address any fires that do come up, just because people feel more supported within the building as a whole. In order to do this, you'll notice here, I kind of hijacked your cow. So within our building, cow means something different now. Our cow is, our culture warmth, and I rolled this out to our staff at the beginning of our school year. So this cow actually danced for them, so I'm sorry it doesn't dance for me. But what we were trying to do, or what I'm trying to make sure... But what we were trying to do, or what I'm trying to make sure that they know, is that if we, as the adults in this building, are taking better care of ourselves, we will pass that down and take better care of our students. And so I introduced these three concepts with them that I was asking them to do throughout the school year, starting in semester one. At our doors meant that our faculty was standing at our doors, not only encouraging students into the room, but also helping students along to their room in a positive manner, and not being distracted by a student who might not be having a good day and might have something nice to say, but to show our enthusiasm that they're in the building. In our halls, I set them with the challenge that no matter who you pass, as long as it's another human being, student or child, we're speaking to each other. We're making eye contact so that we know that I'm speaking to you, and we're giving each other a greeting of whatever our choosing is. And then within our school community, finding reasons weekly in order to have some method of kindness that we give to another individual, whether it be for a student, it doesn't have to be on an academic level, it could just be in terms of acknowledging something that made your week within our community. And this is a challenge from the district all the way to our custodians. Everyone is involved in this. My hope is that there's been a sense of feelingness within the building. I've noticed students responding to this. The idea is, as we feel more invested in each other and in the students, we will feel more like the relationship building, and then more act to handle some of our issues within our classrooms through our relationships versus thinking that we have to refer them out for some type of disciplinary action. So this is the work that we've been working on since school started so far, and it enters us into the actual contract work that EMOJA will be providing us for this school year. And so we're going to bring up this chart so that you're aware of what each piece looks like. In item A, our restorative justice course, our entire English division has set upon the mission to work with EMOJA in this work and to be trained on the work of restorative practices within that division. So that will be each teacher, they are working in division meetings after school hours to get this work done as a team. The advanced circle keeping training consists of the fifteen people from our original group who are coming back to learn advanced training and become circle keepers throughout the building to help this work persist within our school and amongst our adults. The circle intensive courses are for our TCT leaders. Our TCT teams meet during our late start Wednesdays, and they are going to be trained in this modality as well so that they can bring this work to their TCT groups that they meet with monthly. Dean-team thought partnership, you, I believe, know that we are working to recraft our code of conduct. We have them as thought partners. We actually met for the first time today in order to make sure that we're being conscious and deliberate in our code of conduct, in terms of how we expect it to represent our restorative practice work within our building. The interdepartmental team coaching has to do with our MTSS team, so that we can make sure the appropriate tiers of service exist for our students. Where tier one, which is part of the relationship work within the classrooms, if that is not meeting the needs of the students, we have various tiers so that we can address needs, again, thinking separate from disciplinary action and punitive actions to work that has to do with building skills and capacity in those areas. So that's it in a nutshell in terms of the EMOJA work and what's there. Where it says substitute cost, that is because there are two days with groups B and C that they will be doing work where we, only one day each, that we have to pull them out of class to do so, and that's what that work is for.
Questions? Any questions? Deana, are Deana there, Rob?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is the advanced circle keepers. So they'll be going through another year of training?
Yes.
And so when is the expected rollout for them to be training other people? Or will they be doing that simultaneously while they're?
They have three sessions. It's a total of twelve hours this year, so it's not as long as before. And that last session is actually a training session. Well, they'll be doing the work, and EMOJA will be overseeing them doing the work.
So is there, what's, is there a plan already in place for how that would be rolled out? So if they're, who will they be training in essence? Like, do you know?
So in this particular time with all of these people, they're training their peers here at the school in terms of their collegial partners. So the TCTs will take them back to the work. They will be doing that within their divisional teams. And then also in their classrooms, because the modalities that are being taught can be used with adults and with the students. So the expectation is it's going to be used in classrooms as well.
Do you have any grade levels that will be, any of the years, that all of the students will have experience of restorative practices?
That was not put into this one, so I could say definitely all seniors. The reason English was picked, though, is because every student has to have English. So theoretically, every English teacher will be armed with the knowledge and expected to kind of be in, putting this into their classroom work as well. So that was our way of saying, this is a way of pushing it out to all in that manner.
And the last question I have is, is EMOJA part of like you tracking the utilization of it? Will there be some data that's related to how many classrooms have used it? How often they've used it?
Yes, I can definitely make sure that that's what happens, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Gina's last question gets around the edge of mind. Is there a method of monitoring the efficacy and the implementation and how faithful it is to the model?
And that's? That's going to be something that I'm?
Skills sets to the teachers, though, not just the number of times. They can do it forty times, if they don't do it well with, yeah, so monitoring.
Right, right. And within the leads that are doing this through EMOJA, the trainers, I am going to set that up with them so that they have a system of reporting that back to me.
Are they going to observe? Going to observe like in-classroom behavior, et cetera?
So not necessarily in the English. I can definitely ask if that's something that we can add to it, but with the TCT leads, that's built into their session as well, and with the advanced circle keepers, that's built into that.
I appreciate your enthusiasm about this. The actual business before us is approval of a contract. And so there were a number of, gets a little bit less enthusiastic, maybe. But there were a number of questions that were brought to, because it came through finance to Cindy, and I'm just making sure. Did you get those questions? And do we need to repeat?
Just ask. Yes, I'm sorry, because I, yes, they were. I saw the answers, that's what we were.
Because they were, yes, we met and went through them. So do we need to? The contract has changed?
Yes, it's reflective.
Okay. Since yesterday?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that those were incorporated into it. I would state, and I don't know if this is the current cover, I think it's critical that when we're asking for approval of a contract, that we clearly state what it is that we're approving in terms of what the ask is. I know it's kind of, there's a bunch of numbers out there, but the reality is, what is the contract that we're signing up to? And then is that in the, where it fits within our budgetary processes?
I can, we did get the message today, and we will, moving forward in the recommendation, always have within the recommendation line the amount that is being requested. Additionally, this is in our budget.
Yes, this is, you know my name's not on this. It was not intentional. The ask is for, actually, the contract itself is for twenty-five thousand one fifty, and that's within the budget, it's within the strategic plan budget. And that fifteen thousand dollars is really an internal cost. We just wanted to reflect the internal cost.
No, and I appreciate the transparency. So those are the contractual questions. The other question I had, which kind of dovetails on something, which gets to some of the measures would be of value. A specific question based on what you reported. You said there's fifteen returnees?
Yes.
And how are they distributed amongst the building? Are they all in the English department, or what can you tell me?
They are from various departments. I actually can read it where I actually have it.
You said there were the entire English division?
Well, he, and he's speaking specifically of the return.
Oh, circle fifteen.
Is it skewed in any area, or just?
No, so I have a member of security. I have social workers from both the general education and special education side, our MTSS coordinator, counselors, our behavioral specialist, English. And I do, just so you know, I have some English people who were in it last year who will do their advanced course versus doing the other, because they've done the foundational, so they'll be in the advanced course. And then I have some of our special ed and social studies, history. So those are the represented divisions from the fifteen.
Deana, I actually have a question about those folks. Are the bulk of them in classrooms already? So like, if there's an expectation for them to go do circle in other classrooms or train other teachers, do they already have students in their classrooms? So how will that work?
It's about half who are in classrooms and half who are not.
So the ones that are in classrooms, how would they then get to other classrooms to be able to support the facilitation?
So if you remember me mentioning about the peace room, that I'm hoping to make sure that we have these individuals as the people who continue that work, it would be done during prep time, times when they can talk to their peers and set that up with appointments. They know that their work is to continue it throughout the building, so we would arrange it through their times. Especially those people who are not in the classroom, we would use those for times when there were conflicts with others.
So you indicated the research that supports all this work and how it's supposed to promote social-emotional learning, better student achievement. So could you help the board develop some measurable outcomes on student achievement and/or reductions of disciplinary problems, et cetera, that we should look for over the next three to five years? If we have an effective implementation of this program, if we do have a fidelity to the model, then I'm assuming we should expect to see measurable outcomes as a result, right? So I would really, I would certainly appreciate it if you could give us some guidance as to what you think those measurable outcomes should be, and then we could, as a board, look to see whether or not they are actually occurring. And if not, then see whether or not the implementation of the program is the problem or if there's any.
Oh, I was going to say, that is something that I would need to work on and get that to you for sure.
I know this isn't an overnight thing.
Yeah, right, no.
It's important.
And I do understand that I believe that restructuring of our code of conduct is really going to make a difference in this work as well, because it is going to parcel out some of the things that used to be disciplinary work. It's going to be putting it in different areas so that we're finding other ways of addressing those as opposed to punitive measures. So, and then we'll definitely have our disciplinary numbers to show for that as well.
And I just want to already say out as well, and in support of that point, that we have already seen, even though we don't have that student code of conduct, you know, revised and restructured at this point, we've already seen the restorative work that we've done influence, to I would say, a very fair extent, the conversations we are having internally about how our students are doing behaviorally and socially emotional.
Can I ask a question about that, Greg? When you say conversations that are happening internally?
Yeah.
Who's having those conversations?
When I'm talking about the conversations that we're having when we have a, what would have been a typical infraction coming our way, the conversations we are having in the building that first comes to us as far as our deans are concerned, and then a variety of other staff members that are leading that support structure. It has influenced also how we have thought about our in-school for our students as well, and how that's structured.
I just want, the, I'm sorry, did you have some?
Oh, I was just going to say, going back to Rob's comment, the matrix and things that you'll look for could be incorporated within the strategic plan and reporting on CCD versus having a separate matrix builded into that.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I think where I'm going long-term, and we'll talk about this more at the retreat, is establishing a number of measurable outcomes that we are looking for over a series of times that the board just keeps itself informed on and monitors. So it plays our accountability role.
Absolutely, I was just saying.
And I don't care if I'm where it's nested up.
And I was going to say that that conversation, when we talk about our board goals, this is an opportunity to talk about accountability measures. I, does anyone else have any? I wanted to, first, Greg, to your comment, and Gina was alluding to it as well. I, when she asked about the fifteen out of twenty-five, which I wonder if that is typical for EMOJA's work that a little more than half of the folks returned? So I just am questioning that in terms of what that means.
I will say this, I was part of that twenty-five last year. I was not the person who was, made the decision of who was picked, but I know in terms of how it was communicated, I don't know that everyone knew how they were to continue with this work. So the way I've laid it out this year is to make sure everyone understands what the direction of the work is and what the expectation of the people doing the work is. And so these are all willing participants in that work. Like, they all signed up, they've all been in contact, they are explicit on what's going to happen. And that was not necessarily the case.
And I do know that that was a big issue. I'm questioning the, how we are going to understand, I mean, the English division. And Greg, to your point, it feels as though we're talking a lot about the disciplinary piece. And, you know, Linda, you talked about the cow and how that is working. I'm wondering about when this reaches our classrooms and when it is systemic in a way that is not the restorative justice piece. And it's, I'm just saying that that is, you know, a concern. And the other piece in terms of the contract, well, two things. Did we ever get a report from, about last year's work from EMOJA?
Not a report, for the same.
So what were the, there were no deliverables that they had?
Well, the deliverables were specific to conducting various seminars. So, I mean, they did carry those out. We actually, they actually gave us more than we had originally asked for because of the work of the next up. So they did that, they did a community, a sort of justice session for us, and they didn't charge us for that, so. But as far as the deliverables, I don't know if they were clearly articulated in the beginning, but they, in terms of the session that they held, they held the session. So I don't think, I don't think last year's was structured in that way, to be honest with you.
Last year was intended to be the learning year for us. And so the deliverables were us fulfilling those sessions that we were supposed to have. And that's where there was a glitch, we didn't finish all of those sessions in the manner and the time in which we initially were supposed to.
I think what I'm asking about is more about EMOJA and less about us. And I'm speaking now in my homework as a consultant, that you give a report, you give an update, you talk about next steps, and it's something that is not dependent on necessarily having to be in a room, but that is something that the entire institution has access to. And I do recall when Gina and I met with EMOJA folks, would you like, that there was supposed to be something?
Well, there's something they did produce is we, I'm not sure it's exactly, I would characterize it as what you're looking for, but they did provide us what a multi-year plan might look like in terms of changing the culture. So they've given us some documentation on that. I'm not sure I'd characterize that as a report. I'm happy to share that with you. What, that came actually as an outcome of what we needed, we had, because what was, what I was struck, what I was a little bit frustrated by is that we had, we basically had all of these activities, but it wasn't clear where they were leading to. So I had asked them to say, okay, so what does it look like with your help? We were to try to move the culture and change it so we would have longer story practices. So in response to that, they gave us somehow several pages, maybe three or four pages, of what they would consider a multi-year plan of implementation to do that. We went from that, when we went to take that plan and talk about how that would then relate back to the strategic plan, Linda and her organization was actually going to be owning the social and emotional learning aspect of it. That fit right into it, and I wasn't comfortable just going forward with that work. So Linda and I met with EMOJA multiple times, and they came up with this next year's plan. And that's where these E through, or E through E year came from. So I respect what you're asking for with respect to closure on last year. I'd be happy to forward you what they did send us. And if you're looking for something additional to that, I'd be happy to ask them for it. They've been very cooperative, I don't see an issue with that.
I'm sure we asked them for an executive summary of what took place last year with the recommendations, which I think we have the recommendations, this is the plan. If we ask them for that, they will produce.
But the recommendations had to be based on the learning from last year. And that's the piece that, as a board even approving a contract to continue work with this group is. this group is, it's a big hole for me. I don't understand, I mean, I, I met with them, I think they're lovely. And I think that, you know, it probably was great work, but in terms of an investment, I don't know how we, how we can understand even how they're planning, what informs their plan with our building. Just one last thing is, you know, in terms of the metrics that we've been talking about and fidelity, and if they're going to be, you know, doing coaching and things like that, then there's data that they should be, you know, there are deliverables that they should be giving us, whether it's, you know, surveys, their observational data. I mean, there's so many things that would inform this process for us, and if we're asking them to do this work, it's their responsibility to inform that process. And that is not reflected in the, in the contract.
Yeah, to Jackie's point, I just want to strongly support your executive summary or whatever you call that report, it should have an evaluative element to it.
Well, yeah.
Where they said, here's what worked well, here's what didn't work well, here's why we are recommending these steps going forward. And without that, it's really hard to judge the long-term plan. So she's 100% right on that, and that's, that's sort of the basic 101 that we should get. But number two, this is sort of a repeated thing you've heard on a number of contracts I've heard fellow board members raise, where we don't have that, that evaluative piece in place so that the board can make a rational determination that this is the right vendor to go forward with, et cetera, et cetera. So really, this is a crucial program in the larger systems change context we are trying to accomplish here. So I think this is a good one to start flushing out what a strong evaluative program from our standpoint is, with not just measurable outcomes to attain, but how implementation is going to be evaluated so that we know whether or not the flaw is in either the design of the program or the implementation. So I, and this is not an overnight project, but really thinking through this and making some suggestions to the board in the board discussion, and I think we could design a paradigm that could apply in a lot of other instances for our larger hope to move the school district forward on social and racial trust decisions.
And I will just end with, I think the piece from our internal team is that, as we're talking about the metrics and things like that, that is a research and evaluation component that would require though, that personnel to be involved with. It's, you know, it is, I, I think the, my impatience, I will just say, in, it is longer standing than two of you sitting at the table, so please forgive if I sound a bit impatient. But this has been a board goal for years now, and I'm going to disagree with Ralph a little bit. We need sooner rather than later of, if we have an implementation plan, a rollout, every piece of it needs to be informed and to show us, you know, how it's working. And that does require a research and evaluation piece. I don't know what Emoda's strengths are, what they bring to the table in terms of their, you know, the consulting, but we're talking about a systemic change and what we have here, we can't afford to be antithetical anymore or to talk about things we noticed. We have to start speaking that language, having the metrics, but also, you know, the impact here, most of our students spend their time in classrooms. So until we are talking about what is happening there, that's the restorative practices piece. It's not about the code of conduct, it is about, as you said, with the relationship building, but we need to, what's our buying? I mean, it's conservatively that it's 15 out of 25, and maybe there's a totally logical explanation. Emoda needs to inform, you know, what, what happened. And I know parts of it, but it's not enough of it, you know? Because if I were here tonight, this question may not be, you know, be asked just because I had the meeting with them. Just the institutional memory and, you know, we're making big shifts that are systemic, and we have to have the information that allows it to go no matter who's sitting in any of these seats. So I appreciate that, but I do feel that Emoda needs to, needs to feel a little more, in my opinion, for a contract. I don't know how others would feel.
Yeah, man, one, I totally agree with the point being raised and the fact that, you know, it's not something we should be asking for, it's something that they should be coming forthright. But because this is a discussion on a contract, then the question is, what are the deliverables, which is what the contract should cover? And it might just be that we need to, you know, be specific. One of my questions to ask was, you know, in terms of what we own, you know, in terms of materials, that's something that needs to be kind of spelled out. But in addition, I would, I would kind of support what Jackie's saying, which we need to, so that they need to give us this recap and feedback upon which we're basing this part of the contract.
And also what the deliverables, I mean, they talk about the trainings, but there has to be what they will show us that, how that worked or didn't work, I mean, even attendance data and things like that. I mean, those are things that should be part of a summation of their work.
We will go back to you, Emoda, with what we've heard tonight, because our next board meeting is next Thursday, which is when we're planning to come forward, we will more than likely fully item and come back in October, unless we can have the information by next Thursday. It would have to be this Thursday in preparation for next week, so we will probably pull it until the October meeting.
I'm gonna work to see if I can get it.
Okay.
I just wish that to wait the work, then another month.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It would, it, I'm not sure where they would be with the executive summary piece and all of that, and with what I've heard tonight, if they don't have that, because our agenda item meeting is this Thursday. And so if we can have all that, then we can bring it forward. But I'm just being realistic, if they don't have the information for the executive summary and what we've heard the board ask for, the next time we would be able to bring it forward to the board is the October COW and then the special right after that.
Just for transparency, work has begun, dates are set, and so. Yes. I'm not saying that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna like do my part to see what I can get, because dates are set, the work has started, not to the whole extent, of course, but I don't wanna...
Also, this is still, just, I can't believe that I'm the person talking about contracts. From that standpoint, if they want the work...
Absolutely, that's why I said...
We're the ones that ask and say, we will this, if you, you know, and it should...
Female night, so, yeah, I'm gonna...
I think they've given us, I think they've already, they really have. The director is clear.
Yeah, definitely. And do you know that part of what you saw at the very end of that is the priming within the building to be open and accepting to this work? It's not the lack of education that's halting this.
Okay.
And so you have to get people in a space and in a place where they are ready to receive it and then do their part to get the work done. So I'm trying to pair that with the work that Emoda's doing this year in order to get the product that you're speaking of, so.
And your part has been beautifully, you know, illustrated, and you have the points that we talked about, it's that...
Absolutely.
That is the...
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the presentation of an energy services contract.
How we can go through one to the other?
Restorative practice.
Right?
How we're fortunate this presentation is Carolyn Guss, Director of Purchasing and Management. It's Fred, from buildings and ground. It says Fred. It's Fred, not coming.
Fred, where are you?
At the conclusion of this presentation, we would bring this back to the board at September 26th. Again, the future recommendations, we will have the cost within the recommendation line. This is in compliance with strategic plan goal six and board policy 4:150 and board co-listing.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize about my voice echo. I'd like to introduce Becky Thompson. She is a senior energy advisor for Narnia, Narnia Energy or Narnia. She's gonna be assisting in our presentation tonight as well as answering any questions you may have. As you know from your cover memo, the board has had a contract with Vanguard Energy Services for three years. It is expiring in December. We wanted to make sure, Fred and I wanted to make sure that we got the most competitive pricing going forward. We had an offer from, pricing from our existing vendor, which was at a 4% savings. And when I spoke with Becky here, she came up with some better pricing. And that was through the normal RFP process with, which Becky can talk about. We have an option to, excuse me, we have an option to do green energy, and I'm hoping that everyone will agree that we can do 100% green energy. The kilowatt usage over the last three years is about 5, 591. If we were to add the green energy option, we would be at an average of .0083, which comes out to about $4,700 a year, which if you take just the number of households that the, that will report as taxpayers, it comes out to less than 20 cents a household. So I'm hoping that that will be something that we will look for and that you will speak to similarly. Narnia's, Narnia's been around since 1999, they service both public sector and private sectors in Illinois and Maryland. They use a multi-supplier quote process, and they provide pricing from several different energy sources, including all of the state. With that, I want to turn it over to my friend here, Becky, who is gonna talk about this reverse auction process, that I'm hoping is gonna save us a lot of money and allow us to go 100% green.
All right. Thank you so much for having me this evening. My name is Becky Thompson. Beautiful introduction, thank you, Carolyn. So to kick off, before we really dive into the nitty-gritty of the reverse auction, just the high level, we are third-party advisors, and so I work exclusively with school districts and public entities throughout the state, helping guide you through the energy buying process. You're a school district, you have a fixed budget, you have to make sure you stay within the parameters of that budget. However, energy is a constant moving item, and there are a lot of different things, caveats around it. So what we do is we come in and educate and inform and offer guidance through the purchasing process to ensure you're getting the best rate for your district, doing right by your taxpayers, giving you a constant or a fixed price in order to have that cost forecasting while you're making the budget decisions you have to make. And also making sure you have an understanding of any contracts you're entering into, and giving you the basic level of understanding for energy without getting into the weeds too much, so that you as a board can make an informed decision and feel confident you're making the best decision for your district. So when I came out and met with Carolyn and Fred, and we went through some of the pricing I had provided, it was through what we call a sealed bid process, meaning that we collected the pricing based off of the RFP parameters from all of our supply partners. But the suppliers just submit the price based off the RFP, they're not able to see any of the competition, it's a blind bid. It's a sealed bid, just as if you were doing a construction project and it was a sealed bid, wouldn't you would tear it open? That's an effective way of doing it in some instances, but for a public entity where cost is your number one driver most often. When I spoke with them and found out about, you know, the big goals you have for reducing your budget and really getting as much money and much bank for your buck as possible, I introduced the idea of the live reverse auction. So this is, you're still purchasing energy the same way, it's just an enhancement to the process you've been doing. And it really just takes into account the three main drivers for your district as it comes to energy procurement. Number one, bottom line, right? It's the dollars at the end of the day for the bills that you're writing the checks to for your gas and electricity. Number two, though, for, very important for a school district, is risk management. There are a lot of different moving pieces in energy and a lot of different ways that you can quote-unquote fix your energy rate. So are you open to any risk as a, as a district throughout the term of your contract? Is your rate going to change? If we have another polar vortex, are you going to get an energy bill that's three times what you expected and it blows your budget out of the water? These are conversations you need to have on the forefront to make sure you're getting a product that protects you and your budget. And number three, you're a public school, transparency is an absolute must. As you know, we're a for-profit business, we feel that everything should be out in the open as far as any fees that you are paying, anything that's in your product that you are signing up for, your contract is thoroughly vetted. We want you to have an understanding, again, of what you're signing up for at a basic level so that you know what it is that you're signing off on, you're protecting your district, again, and you're making the best decision. So as we dig in, to talk more specifically about the live reverse auction. So imagine eBay in reverse. At eBay, everyone's bidding for a product and they're paying more and more and more, and then at the end of the auction, the winning bid takes it. A reverse auction is exactly that. So during the course of 20 or 30 minutes, all of the suppliers actually log on to an online platform, and they're all in the same arena, bidding against each other, seeing the live inaction type price to beat. So they're seeing what their competitors are actually presenting, and they're able to present multiple bids throughout the 20 to 30 minutes. Who benefits? Both the suppliers, because they have transparency in the price process, which normally they would not, they just kind of set it and forget it and hope that they press the fingers that they were the low bid. So they love the process because they get a little more feedback. And you, school districts typically love it, because it's an online platform, everyone can be involved who wants to be. It's an online platform with a live link, so if any of you board members would be interested in seeing how it happens, you can watch the events unfold real time. You actually see the little dots show up and see how much money your district is going to save after, at the end of it. Because this process is so transparent for the suppliers, it leads to ultimate margin compression. And by that I mean, if a supplier is sending you a price in an email, and then you're taking it to board approval in the next three weeks, they're building a little bit of cushion into that price because the market moves every single day. If the market goes up 10%, they have to build in some margins and some cushion so that when you actually go to execute the contract following your board approval, they're not having any money, right? As much as they would love to do a solid for a school district, they're not gonna take a hit on your behalf. So by the margin compression with a live auction, at the end, the end result, if you choose to accept the winning bid, you sign the contract on the day of the auction because all of that margin, all of that fluff has been stripped out of the price. So it's a little bit different process, but we do all the work on the front end. So I know you know I'm not coming in asking for a blank check tonight, right? So how do we quantify these savings? How do we quantify this process? And how do you know that the numbers you're getting from the auction are producing the results and the savings that you would like to see because the contract has the expectation of signing on the day of the auction? So we still run that sealed bid process. We still go out to all the suppliers ahead of time, get where the market, the market is currently, and set a price to compare. So we're quantifying the numbers. After running 10,000 auctions, the savings for school districts, as far and away, always about 3% to 5%, if not more, today's market is upwards of 8% to 14%, but conservatively, 3% to 5% by running the auction below just doing the sealed bid. So remember I said the number one driver for you guys should be bottom line? Running an auction, not only do you have the transparency and your involvement, and you can see what's going on, you're getting an additional 3% to 5% savings on your electricity rate. So let's put this into real live numbers. These numbers are just a hypothetical, I think our, the usage is a little bit off. I think you said it was like 5.1, so these numbers are just a hypothetical, but it just kind of paints the picture of what we're actually talking about here. So say you do the sealed bid RFP, and you get all of your suppliers, and the low bid is 5.9 cents. Any broker, any consultant, any supplier that you're working with is building a fee into that cost, because we have transaction costs, we have cost of doing business for the services that we provide. Say it's about .001. So your end contract that you would be signing is a fixed rate per KWH for the term of the contract at a little over 6 cents. And we take those same suppliers, we throw them into a live auction the next day. It produces an 8% savings on your electricity rate. Because of the auction platform, we're utilizing the cost for us to transact are higher, so our fee is a little bit higher. But add that in, and even taking that into consideration with the savings of the auction, comes out to a rate of almost 5.7 cents. Which... Which based off of the usage presented here is a $17,000 savings only by doing the live reverse auction in addition to the sealed bid. Any questions? So that kind of is the nuts and bolts of the live reverse auction as it stands. Any specific questions as to the process before we go into specifics of market in your district?
In terms of timing, you said that it fluctuates. So have you mastered the art of knowing when, whether it's in a month or a cycle of going to hold the auction? Because it's very confusing.
Right. Oh, that's a perfect leading question, actually. Thank you so much for asking that. I did not have a crystal ball. If I did, I would probably not be working any longer. So the energy market is just like the stock market. We don't know where it's going to go on day to day. Unfortunately, it is traded like any other commodity, like beans and petroleum. So it really depends upon the emotions of the traders on the floor. So if they think it's going to be a very cold winter, they're going to hike up gas prices, right? So that's kind of how it operates. So what we have to do is we have to look at the past to help us discern what we think the future is going to be. How's that for a politician's answer? Is that good? We know within a reasonable amount. What we do know, and I'm going to scroll down here so you can see the dates. So my company's been in business for 20 years. So for 20 years, we've been tracking what the pricing is every single day for the past two decades. This is a snapshot of the last three years. Typically, energy purchases happen in one, two, three, four-year increments. So we look at the last three years to discern where we think the next three years are going to go. The market has been going down since I've been around. I've been doing this for seven years. And every year, it seems like the industry joke is, oh, the market's the lowest it's ever been. Around July 4th of this year, it actually bottomed out to the lowest price it's ever been in the last decade. We're still currently, so this is where this arrow is pointing, is where we were around July 4th. It's now gone up a little bit. But as you can see, we're still in the lowest 1 percentile of the last decade for pricing. So to answer your question, I don't know the exact time. There's not an exact month. Typically, there are what we call shoulder months, where you think of peak season, like heating season or cooling season. Those are the peak months. The shoulder months are where the Octobers and the Aprils, the market's a little less volatile. Those are where we start to look for opportunities. But for us, it's a constant. It could be, hey, the market just totally bottomed out today. We don't know why. We should start looking at this. And that's why working with an advisor who's proactive and, you know, constantly providing that feedback to you is really crucial and important. As I've heard tonight, reporting and data is very important to your board. So that's why working with a consultant is so crucial and someone looking out for you and not just calling you three months before your energy contract is up. This is a discussion that we should be having far, much more further in advance to identify those opportunities. What's so neat about where the market is today is with your contract coming up in December, not only does the reverse auction present an opportunity for that additional savings beyond the sealed bid, but where the market is currently as well is additional savings for your district. So I feel very strongly that by running an auction or running a sealed bid, whatever you decide to move forward with, you will see some significant savings on your energy contract going forward by looking at this sooner than later. As we, excuse me, as we approach winter and you get closer to your contract end date and you're backed into a corner, what we don't want to happen is we have a 32-degree date in October, the market panics and it goes up 7% or 8% and any savings you have has been dissolved. We know where the market is today. It's low. I would take action sooner than later.
Yeah. Can you talk, because our contract is up in December.
Yes.
So can you talk about just the transition timing? If, you know, we do an auction, how we bridge between current and future?
Absolutely. So when you are purchasing a futures commodity, so you're buying today what you're going to use tomorrow. So any auction or anything that you're doing today is actually starting in December of 2019. That's the start date that all suppliers are provided. You could actually, it could be a December 2020 start date and that would be no issue. The transition time, from the time that you sign a contract to the first flow with your new supplier, if you were to switch suppliers, they require 20 business days prior to your meter read in the month of the switch. So if your meter read of your account is December 5th of 2019, then 20 business days prior to December 5th is when you would need to have your contract executed with the supplier and have it accepted.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? I wanted to make this point that Carolyn had touched on, the green energy. And why it's very interesting and also incredible that a school district is considering this as an option. So the way that the market is moving, I'm sure you've probably heard about all of solar companies infiltrating Illinois and all of these wind farms going up in southern Illinois. And why is that happening? So there's actually the Future Energy Jobs Act, which is a current law in place where by 2025, 25% of all electricity in the state of Illinois has to be generated by renewable sources. There's now also another Clean Energy Jobs Act that is in Springfield that is, wants to mandate that by 2050, 100% of all energy in the state of Illinois is renewable. So this is the way of the market. This is the way that things are going. So right now, green energy is actually extremely affordable for that reason. We have a lot coming in that's domestically produced. We have a lot that's coming into Illinois. And so we're seeing wind and solar specifically within the state. So like she had mentioned, for, you know, less than 1% of your total energy cost, you could operate as 100% green energy purchase school district, which allows you a lot of different benefits, including the PR ability to share that with your taxpayers. You could build it into curriculum if that's something that you so wish, how students can learn about green energy and how it affects climate change. So there's a lot of different moving pieces to that. And this illustration, excuse me, just shows you for your district, based off of the 5 million KWH usage that you have for the carbon offset, this is the equivalent of what is used to power 617 homes of electricity for one year. This is the equivalent of taking off 750 cars off of the road for driving for one year. It's an equivalent of 3.8 million pounds of coal burned. So this does have a big impact, like she had mentioned, for pennies to each of your taxpayers. So it is something to consider. We can run simultaneous auctions for both what we call brown power, which is the traditional coal-fired or nuclear power, and also a green energy option as well. So you can have the option for either. But we did want to present this to you. Being in the area that you're located, I feel that this is very important to your community and offers you a lot of benefits as well.
So with the, when you said the option of brown versus green, is that, I'm trying to understand what, it sounds like there may be a potential policy level issue there of saying we are, you know, going to need more environmentally sound or green. And I don't know how that works. If it's the option, if one is more expensive than the other, how will that decision be made if it's not something that we've said is the important thing?
Right. And I think that that's one of the pieces that we would like you to decide upon or give the authority for Carolyn or whoever is the decision maker on the day of the auction to make that discernible decision. The difference between the two would be the cost. So that adder that she had talked about, green energy does require a premium because it's more expensive to, unfortunately in this day and age, to make wind and solar power generated electricity than it is coal. So the difference between the two is that $4,000 or $5,000 difference. So I would just ask board maybe consider and maybe provide some direction in the way of what you're more comfortable with and/or arm them with the ability to make that decision on the day of.
Any other?
I have another question. So what is the ask? What are you asking us for?
I'm asking for approval from the board at the September 26 meeting to, for you to give me approval to conduct a live reverse auction on behalf of the district with Narnia. If the auction results fall at or under the parameters that are in board cover memo, I would like the administration to have approval to enter into the purchase agreement at the time for a 36-month contract.
So what are those parameters?
Parameters are on the second page. It's under, in summary, it gives you the 12-month, 24-month, and 36-month updated cost from Thursday afternoon.
And how, okay, and how did you derive the 12-month price?
So we actually ran the sealed bid RFP that I mentioned.
So that's your sealed bid price. And for how many days is that good? Is that good for a December 1 start, like your auction would be?
That, yes. That's, yeah, it's the exact same parameters, except that the suppliers weren't bidding against each other live. They just submitted them.
I understand. So that is essentially a backup contract that you bid out and that's the lowest price?
Right.
So, okay. So before we get into that, a couple of questions. I have a bunch of questions yet.
No, please. You've been so quiet. It's lovely to hear your voice.
So I guess we do have some policy questions as to, you know, what we can do. I guess we can talk about those in a minute. But does our policy allow us to run an auction price at all? I mean, anywhere in our procurement policy prohibit this?
I'm pretty familiar with the procurement policy and I don't believe there's anything in it that prohibits me from, or from asking for permission from you.
Okay.
Yes.
Second question. So we use about 50, about 5.1 megawatts a year?
Kilowatts.
Right, kilowatt, no.
Slightly over 5 million kilowatt hours.
5 million kilowatt hours. So five megawatts.
Thank you.
That's okay. What's the bandwidth on this contract?
Oh, terrific question. So because like I mentioned, I work exclusively with school districts. All contracts are required before they're even able to participate in the auction and they have to actually check off that they agree to all these terms from Payment Act for your payment days and also 100% material change or bandwidth, which basically your usage for that 5 million that you mentioned could swing 100% above that or 100% below that with no penalties. Your supplier is purchasing based off of your estimated usage from the past two years on the day of the contract and they purchase for the term of the contract the day the contract is signed. So if you sign a three-year contract, you're not paying your electric bill until every month for the next three years. The supplier is going out to market that day and purchasing for 36 months. So they need some sort of baseline in order to predict that. Usually the bandwidth is about 20%. And for schools, we just can't have you have any kind of provision that would open you up to any sort of risk throughout the term of your contract. So we require 100% for any suppliers that participate.
Thank you. What is our ability to terminate the contract? Do we have any?
You have the ability to terminate a contract at any time. Because like I mentioned, they are purchasing for the entire term of the contract on the day of and they are taking that financial risk. The supplier does have the ability that if they wish to present you with early termination damages for not fulfilling the terms of your contract.
So are there early? So when you do this as a, in a residential sense, you have essentially no damages for terminating your contracts. You can terminate your contract anytime you want.
Right.
And rebid for a lower contract, correct?
Right.
If you do this from an industrial standpoint, you don't get that latitude.
You do not have that ability in industrial.
The question is, so what latitude will we have?
I'm not sure, other than by latitude, you're asking like...
Would we be able to terminate and go for a lower and re-auction?
Not without, not without opening yourself up to the damages. Right. Right. And that's a standard across industrial and commercial. With residential, it's a state law that is now passed because a lot of people would sign a six-month contract and then after six months and month seven, their rate would triple. And some suppliers were doing some shady business. With a commercial industrial, it's a much larger volume we're talking about here and so that would put the supplier at too much risk. So I would not recommend. There are options, if you want to get creative, for doing what they call blend and extends, where you could take your current rate if the market completely bottoms out further than we've even seen, where you in effect extend your contract by blending the rate and then you have a lower way cost over the term of the contract. Like it's a little creative and a little messy, but it's something that would allow you a loophole if so.
Yeah. I was just trying to probe for whether we follow the residential or commercial.
Nope, no, unfortunately, no.
I think it's funny. Residential, you get to, if you know what you're doing, you can, you can rebid.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So, all right. Those were, my biggest concern was bandwidth because I've done this number twice before with a 20% bandwidth and polar vortex doesn't cover you in a 20% bandwidth problem. So I have an opinion on what I think the best thing is, but I'll let some other people talk.
Well, if you could just, the polar, because I, whoever can answer the polar vortex question?
Sure.
Because that's the question when you first brought that up. And then, you know, I'm glad you asked the question about, you know, the residential because that was the whole thing, that it was very predatory in terms of homeowners, you know, the rates going up. I still don't know if that doesn't happen for the commercial side. Individual residential is protected, but there isn't that same clause, but is the same kind of thing going on that after a certain amount of time, you know, the rates are going to go up and we have no control over that unless we opt out and pay damages.
Right. So getting back to when we talked about the different products and the different risks that the district is at. So there's, think of a pie chart. There's a lot of different moving pieces in your fixed electricity rate. And you can fix all of those for what we call a fixed all-end price, which is what I had actually talked to Fred and Carolyn about. So for the term of your contract, it is written that this is the fixed price per KWH throughout the term of your contract with no changes. Your usage is going to vary. So if we have a polar vortex and you're using twice as much because you're heating much more, your usage is going to go up. So invariably, your bill is going up, but your rate remains stagnant. You need to have a fixed rate in place so that you can do the cost forecasting. And so no. When we have a fixed rate, the contract is ironclad. That is the fixed rate for the entirety of the contract through purchase.
Tom, you have a question?
Thank you.
Yeah, I know I have another one.
No, my question might lead into Craig's recommendation because my understanding is that the recommended auction would be both green and brown, and if so directed, and then also 12, 24, and 36 months.
Correct.
And so my que, so now it's the two by three, right? I don't remember. My question is, what will be the decision, or how will the decision be made in terms of 12, 24, or 36? Will it just be that there'll be hurdles for each? And if the hurdle is met for 36, then it's 36? How does that handle when you're talking about looking at three different timeframes?
Great. Excellent question. So typically with school districts, because cost is your number one driver, we would run the three terms simultaneously because the market's ever-changing. One day it may be the 12-month is the low rate. One day it may be the 36-month. So my decision and my recommendation would be based off of what had the lowest cost to the district, whether it be the 12, 24, or 36. Was that all the margin question?
That's, yeah, I mean, because I'm going back there. Because that trend shows that, you know, long-term, things have continued to go down. So we would expect the longer term to be lower unless someone sees something different. And just to be clear, because I'm hearing the word heating and polar vortex, we're talking here strictly about electricity, not natural gas.
Thank you for the clarification. This is, this is...
Polar vortex.
Energy is energy.
Electricity, actually electricity, your volumes do go up during the polar vortex because your blowers and everything are going much more frequently. So it is an interesting discussion where it affects both sides. But yes, to your point of the terms and that kind of thing.
Correct. I think.
And just something to point out on this graph, I know that's a lot of colors and probably a little hard to read. We're in a bit of an anomaly and have been for the past year. We call this a backward market right now. Remember when I said that the supplier, when they purchase, they're purchasing for the term of the contract? So they're taking a financial risk by the longer-term contracts that they actually commit to. So historically, what we've seen is the longer-term contracts have a less favorable rate. And as of late in the last year, it's now backward where this red line that you see is actually the short-term contract. This is the 12-month. Whereas the 22, the three and four years are actually the lowest prices. So I believe that's why Carolyn is asking for the recommendation for the 36-month. Upon running the sealed bid, we did find the 36-month had the most favorable rate. So not only do you get the most favorable rate, but you have now locked it in ironclad for three years. So you're getting that budget certainty and the cost savings guaranteed over the term of the contract. of the contract.
And that's, if I may say, that's assuming that it doesn't go down even further in the market. So it's potentially favorable, right? So it's an upside down market. So that's a quibble, but.
Potentially, yes.
So maybe a year or two years, especially if there's volatility to your flow, it might behoove us to take 12 months, think maybe initially it'd be lower, but that's your expertise, not mine.
Yeah. I would, if you're asking for my recommendation, I don't gamble and I look at, like we talked about, I look at the past and knowing that it's in the lowest 1 percentile of the last decade, to me, the risk is greater that it's going to go up and it's going to go down. I would be more upset with myself if I recommended you do a 12-month and the price then escalates and then next year we're having this discussion and then it's a much different discussion versus it went down an extra 1% and you could have saved an extra $2,000. Now I'm costing you an extra 40.
Excellent points.
Right.
Now you all have some very great talking points for the next dinner that you have to.
And that cool graph on what this would look like in our community. So thank you, and then this will come back next week.
Let me just give my two cents on that thing. I'm very supportive of doing this, although I'm not that supportive of a three-year versus a one-year. I have a slightly different opinion that the most sophisticated forecasters here in the market are the ones setting the price. And they're setting the price to be lower in three years, not in, not higher.
Right. Well, there's a question that I had with, because that's more. In terms of how we evaluate contracts, if we're talking three years, does this fall, excuse me, in our purview of, you know, our vendors and every five years? It seems as though this may, we're going into a whole new world. Maybe we should evaluate it saying every five years?
Yeah. Traditionally, Oparif has done every three years. You've looked at it. Gas is up next December, so that will come before you in early fall.
So you're saying that those contracts, I'm sorry, those contracts are, the vendor, the request goes out more frequently than it does for others?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
But you just triggered something that, I'm objecting, you're a president. No, because if we do a three-year contract at a .002% rate, that would mean the fees for, I want to say Nenea, but.
Nenea.
Okay?
Nenea.
Would exceed $25,000 over a three-year period. So does that require more approval of a contract?
Yeah.
Whereas, it could, I mean, the ballpark's at about $10,000 a year. So that's a different requirement than a two-year would, right? Correct?
I think so.
And.
If he's talking about the approval authority?
Oh.
That if it was a two-year, where it would be versus a three-year, where it would be?
Just for the, for the, for your, for your.
Consulting.
Your consulting fee, right? Just for your service fee would be a require, we didn't need to make sure we factor that into the decision-making. Or not into the decision-making. I think we should pursue the right thing, but the execution will possibly require that.
Yes. So if we could have the memo reflect that when it comes up for next week, those, I know Gail was taking, hoping those points could tell you everything you just said.
Absolutely.
To reflect all of those, those points, that would be helpful in terms of transparency and making a decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a long-term facilities plan update.
Wait a break before that.
Four-minute break.